For us to gather, to do the people's business.
There is available tonight due to a family emergency, but we will move forward without that and thank, thank all of you for attending. Clay will call the row.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brisington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White. Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
And now we've had, please review the September twenty-sixth meeting, minutes of the meeting. Are there any changes, corrections up there? If not, then we'll leave the minutes as standard as approved. Do we have anything other than an announcement? Tonight is the night of our fiftieth anniversary of one of our councilmembers. You only get fifty one time. So I'm just saying, we don't have to sing "Not Sure About Your Voice." Well, we do, we do want a happy birthday to councilmember John DeWorke.
Thank you.
You so much. Thank you for not singing. All right, we have a list of citizens. As most of you know, we allow three minutes and we have a clock here, but we have several citizens that are here to speak and I'm going to call your name and you please give your name and address and then you can begin speaking for up to three minutes. Ms. Ruth Patton.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ruth Patton. My address is six two zero five Parker Conway, Greenville, South Carolina, two nine six oh nine. I'm here to talk about housing, affordable housing. I was working, I am a single mother. I was a working citizen ever since I was fifteen years old. At the age of thirty-nine, my health went down, which had me not able to walk and use my limbs. So that mean I had to, I lost my job. I lost my housing where I lived at when I was buying a home. And I have a daughter, I have a fifteen-year-old daughter now that goes to Greenville High School. Right now I'm on Section Eight housing. I mean, and it's like where I'm living at now, the housing is still, is going up constantly every year. I've been there seven years and the housing is going up. So I'm trying to figure out where that leaves me and my daughter, you know. You know, I'm not here to depend on the government because it took me a long time to get on any kind of assistance because it took me to go to mental health because I was going through depression because I lost everything I had, you know. I didn't want to be, you know, dependent on the government, but I had to because of my health. And I want to know, you know, what, what's going to happen to me and my daughter, you know, with affordable housing when I'm only on disability? You know, and I have a fifteen-year-old daughter that goes to Greenville High School. She's making straight A's. You know, I help with the community. I help feed the homeless when I'm able to. You know, I help with gun violence with Mr. Logan. I do, you know, so I do stuff in the community to help myself, to keep myself going because I was going through depression.
Yes ma'am.
But I would like to know what's going to happen with me and my daughter with this affordable housing because I'm only making like less than twenty, twenty-three thousand a year. I mean, what, what that's going to leave me and my child? So I want to know, can someone help us, you know? That's, this is not where I thought my life was going to be here where I'm fifty years old now, when I got a teenage daughter. You know, so who going to help us? And I don't sit at home. I, I help my, I help my daughter with her work, you know. I help with community service. I do everything I can for the community. I go to church, you know. I take care of my family. So who going to help us? That's all I need to know. Who going to help us? Because we need help too, a little income.
Yes ma'am.
So I thank you all for listening. I hope you all listen to me and have ears and I pray to God that y'all help us. Thank you.
Thank you so very kindly. You said it much more elegant than the rest of us. Mr. Jack Logan.
My name is Jack Logan, fifty-fifty-one Old Augusta Road. I think about gun violence, school shootings. I think about Greenville High School. Approximately three weeks ago, I turned onto Augusta from downtown. I could not see the high school because of the new condos, their own boundary. Then I thought about the risk. What if there's a sniper or someone who want to kidnap children? How would law enforcement see who did that? With the street going to the stadium now, that's not a road anymore. Those kids deserve better. Walking across your railroad track down Augusta to University Ridge. And I sent y'all pictures of those condos, blocked the entire thing, the vision, the vision of it. This should have been planning, should have looked at this. I mentioned this to the chief on yesterday. His response was, well, big buildings going to everywhere. Law enforcement should have been in the midst and should be in the midst of any building being built in the city. Because now, what I'm asking the city to do is to require whoever the property owner, whoever built those condos, they can't put nothing but security cameras on their side to assist law enforcement if there's a school shooting. And me meeting up, talk, discussing this with other people, they were thinking the same way I was thinking. So we thinking like that, the bad people are thinking the same thing, what they can do and get away with. We must protect students. And you all hear about this. It's one thing about a dollar, it's one thing about a condo, but children's safety and students' safety comes first. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that and we appreciate you taking this in that vein. Mr. Bruce Wilson.
Bruce Wilson, fourteen, Free Stone Street, Greenville, South Carolina. This council was provocative in making sure that the Unity Park went from a vision to reality. And you accomplished that goal successfully. But what good is it to have a unity across town when you have a Confederate statue downtown? The concept of the Unity Park was to bring communities together, to shine light on the fact that we had ended segregation in a particular neighborhood. But how can we come together in unity if we still have symbols of hate and division in downtown Greenville? There was no doubt that the Confederate statue is nothing but a relic of the past, a relic of hatred and racism that was designed to intimidate free black individuals from the time beyond Reconstruction. And here we are in twenty-twenty-two with those same symbols. So what good is it to build a Unity Park if we cannot tear down a racist statue? Two years ago, Mayor White informed me that he would do everything he could to move that statue into, from, from where is that now, into the cemetery. Two, two years later, nothing has happened. So I'm asking this council to please pass a resolution condemning that statue. I'm also asking this council to remove that statue. Now, I know that this council will tell me that they cannot do it because of the Heritage Act. But I also know that this council was able to bypass the United States Constitution to stop individuals from bringing guns in downtown Greenville. So that lets me know that there's a way to get around this Heritage Act, which I believe is already unconstitutional. You had the willingness to fight for the Unity Park, but that will be a symbolic, that, that would only be symbolic if we do not fight to remove this Confederate statue that is in downtown Greenville. Today, we have individual groups fighting to remove books from schools and libraries under some notion called CTR or CTR or whatever it is. Well, I will tell you this. We have the so-called CTR in downtown Greenville. Let's fight to remove it. It's time to change. It's time to remove some of these symbols. I know some will say it's heritage, but it is a heritage that had my family in bondage. That's not unity. So if we can build a Unity Park that all of us can be proud of, there's a statue in downtown Greenville that none of us should be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Nalisha Henry.
Good evening. Nalisha Henry, Vice President of Community Impact at United Way of Greenville County, one oh five Edinburgh Court, Greenville, two nine six zero seven.
Thank you.
Uh, council members, for a hundred years, from the Great Depression through COVID-nineteen and every day in between, United Way has been here for Greenville County, harnessing the collective power and collective generosity of this community and to help those in need while constantly evolving and changing to meet the needs of today. And as we know, Greenville is a thriving and growing community, many thanks to your leadership and to your vision. At this pivotal moment, we have the chance to shape the kind of community we will have for the next five years, ten years, twenty years, a hundred years. One where all people have access to the opportunities that this community can provide and to achieve their full potential. Right now, we know that more than sixty-three thousand people are living in poverty in Greenville County, with many more just one expected event or expense away. We're seeing growing disparities across the board in housing, in income, in education that threaten the long-term success of this very community we all love. As United Way of Greenville County, we echo the voices of Greenville County Housing Fund as well as many coalition partners advocating for affordable housing in this community. We know that continued investment in affordable housing yields long-term effects for children and their families, from seniors looking for affordable housing to, in a safe place to age in place, to industry and restaurant workers, single moms working multiple jobs to provide for their families, firewomen and firemen, first responders and police. And we know that the need is great. In twenty-twenty-one, our two-one-one resource line aimed to connect community members to critical resources in this community, received nearly ten thousand calls for assistance. Of those calls, forty-seven percent were related to housing expenses, homelessness and shelter services and affordable housing. In addition, we know that safe and stable housing is a critical element to children's academic success, stable families, health and wellness, and a strong workforce. And for these reasons, United Way, in partnership with many, many others in this community, thanks you for your consideration of continued investment in affordable housing and the prosperity of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Nalisha. Ms. Yvonne Reader.
Yvonne Reader, I reside at ten Zera Street in Greenville, South Carolina. I've been a resident here for seventy-three years. And tonight, I want to share with you all a thought that I want you to consider in your minds. Unity stands for togetherness. In Greenville, we once shared a togetherness that worked very well. It was in Nickel Town. I grew up with families from all social, religious, and educational variations. We lived in harmony. We were inspired by the many financial levels, living on the same street. But do you feel we have lost the unified community to the elite, the power grabbers? And it's all about me group? Some of us have grave concerns. It is time to wake up Greenville. If we are to survive as the great city that we say we are, then we need every level of citizens to be included in the successes of our city. We can coexist in the same neighborhoods if we put moral obligations above financial gain in our housing decisions. Mixed communities thrive when we learn to accept our differences with respect of each other. Many poor residents work every day to provide lifestyles that they can never have. To people who continue to make decisions that push them further away from their basic needs like housing, decent pay, and quality education. I ask everyone to open your hearts and give thought to the community as a whole when making decisions about our future. We can have success without stepping on the backs of our lower-income people all the time. When I think of all of the success stories in Greenville that we had with the convention center, the, where it's Bilo and now it's Von Secour. We look at Unity Park. We look at areas of Greenville that are just blooming. And when you go back a couple of years, that's where all of our low-income people lived. And you notice I said lived because we're no longer there in those communities. We've been replaced by million-dollar condos and half-million-dollar housing and four-hundred-thousand-dollar houses that the people who worked hard to make this city the quality city that it is are being pushed out into the country and to areas where they don't have transportation to even maintain a quality job. And I ask you tonight and from this day forward to remember those people in your decision-making of the future.
Thank you, Ms. Reader. John Martin.
Hello, my name is John Martin. I live at five Taylor, five Marina Drive, Taylor, South Carolina. It's truly an honor to stand here before y'all. I am the co-owner of Sunday Dinner with a Twist Incorporated. Our nonprofit goes out and we feed the homeless. We provide the homeless rides to get IDs, medical appointments. We try to get them housing. I came, come today to talk about Ms. Patricia, who is a seventy-six-year-old mother. And we found her living under a bus stop with her two sons who are intellectually challenged. Ms. Patricia gets a check and one of her sons gets a check. And the only place we had to take her was a hotel. We've had her there for a year. And she stayed in this hotel for a year and each month, they get a check. We still have to pay one week of that month so they won't go back to the streets. We have done everything possible to get them into housing and there's nothing being afforded to them. I'm just coming to ask y'all to please help get some housing so Ms. Patricia and them can get out of the hotel on Holden Road. I mean, she's a little old lady. She's a sweet little old lady. They don't do drugs. They don't do alcohol. They're just lost in their ways out there in the streets. And I also come to you about my friend Tammy, who is living in the streets right now. Recently, she's had open-heart surgery. They cut her chest wide open. They released her from the hospital the other day and they released her back to a tent, which we had to buy her another tent. So she's out there with a cut in her chest. And tomorrow I'm taking her back to the doctor. Hopefully they're going to put her back in the hospital. Because she, she don't go back to the hospital tomorrow. She's probably going to die out there in that tent. There's nowhere for her to go. The hospital said they had no other choice but to send her back out there. They did all they could. So I'm coming to y'all, asking y'all, please, think about the homeless people. Some of them do want to get off the streets. I'll tell you a story real quick about Bobby J. Bobby J was out in the homeless here for nine years. He called me one day and said, hey, can you find my family? He said, people have been trying. They can't find him. Come to find out, his family dropped him off here at the Salvation Army nine years ago. And he's been walking the streets because he left the Salvation Army. His family has not been able to find him. We located him from Holly Hill, South Carolina, put him on FaceTime, and now Bobby J is back home in Winston-Salem, living in a condo. He went from the streets right here in Greenville. And all it took was a little effort, a little time, a little bit of effort to go an extra mile for these people who a lot of people think they're deplorable. But Bobby J went to the fair the other day and he rode the rides. He's sixty-six years old. And he rode the rides and he called me and told me all about it. So I ask y'all to please think about the homeless. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you so much.
What was your nonprofit again?
Sunday Dinner with a Twist Incorporated.
Okay, thank you.
We do have a Facebook kind of internet website, all this stuff.
All right, thank you. Ms. Duckett. Ms. Henry. The second Ms. Henry, I'm sorry. Okay. Morgan O'Kane. Ms. Johnson. And Brittany. Okay. I just wanted to be sure we were told they possibly would not show up. So that's the end of our comments and communications, et cetera. We have a presentation at this time. Unless anyone has any, has any comments, questions before we move forward. If not, we have a presentation at this time by Mr. Brian Brown of Greenville Housing Fund. Welcome.
Afternoon, members of council. Thank you for having me back. I just wanted to come back and provide a brief update, excuse me, from my recent presentation at your last meeting and, uh, work session, I'm sorry. And I, I think I have some good news to share. But before I share it, let me just say a few words about, you know, a lot of times when we're talking about affordable housing, we talk about the complex and layered financing. And I, I, you know, I was listening to some of the speaker comments and it occurred to me that we also need to have the right public policies layered with each other to complement the financing that we can generate to make these things work together. And what I want to share with you today is, I want to talk and update you on the good news of what's happening in Greenville County and the affordable housing policy that was passed out of the Committee of the Whole by Greenville County Council that will implement a tax abatement for the inclusion of affordable housing and otherwise market rate developments. And I just wanted to take a minute to talk about why that is important for our community. The policy that, that passed out of the Committee of the Whole at Greenville County and that will be on county council's agenda, I believe, next Tuesday on the eighteenth and will take one vote to implement this policy. The reason this is such a milestone, it would really put Greenville in the forefront of effective public policy supports for affordable housing in a couple of ways. First, it would incentivize private developers to use this tool starting at the inclusion of twenty percent affordability in their projects. More importantly, the tax abatement that would be attached to this policy provides affordability in, at the following levels. Eighty percent area median income, sixty percent area median income, and forty percent area median income. And just to give you an idea of what that achieves, that means that housing would be attainable by households beginning with incomes at twenty-three thousand dollars a year and going up with a family of four at eighty percent to sixty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars. That is a very nice mix of affordability. And the rents would range from seven-hundred-and-fifteen dollars for a one-bedroom to nine-hundred-and-twenty-two for a three-bedroom by way of example. In the developments that you can think about that have occurred recently in Greenville, imagine if twenty percent of them were able to use this tool and provide that level of affordability and those housing choices for our community. It would be housing that would be attainable for our hospitality industry, our food service workers, customer service and retail workers, and a lot of our workforce, teachers, to name a few. I also wanted to mention and thank, I want to thank the county staff for the leadership that they've provided in promoting this policy and bringing it forward. I want to thank Councilman Ennis Fan at Greenville County Council, Chris Harrison. They have both done a lot of work on this policy and I really appreciate their, their leadership. I also wanted to give a shout out to our very own Mayor White. Mayor White was involved in and very supportive of this effort. And I think we can all be proud of his, his efforts on this policy. I also wanted to briefly follow up from my last presentation about the need to accelerate investment in affordable housing by the city of Greenville. As I mentioned at the last work session, I feel like we're in this critical moment, in this urgent moment in our city. And as you've heard some of the speakers say, you know, our neighborhoods are rapidly gentrifying. And if we could get this accelerated funding, we can do so much more to meet this critical moment. To that end, I wanted to mention that I've been working with city staff. I have some ideas to share and I plan to reach out to each of you on critical next steps to advance this effort to accelerate funding for affordable housing. And you can expect to hear from me in the coming days. And just remember that we do have a very robust pipeline of multifamily. We have an emerging new land management ordinance coming. We have what I hope will be a very effective county policy that can be used in this city and across the county to encourage private developers to include affordability. So when you think about all of these things coming together, if we had additional accelerated funding, we could really devote a good portion of that to our neighborhood strategy and promote affordable homeownership and arrest the gentrification we are seeing in our neighborhoods. With that, that's all I really had. I just wanted to come and briefly thank and acknowledge Greenville County Council. Encourage all of you to reach out to those folks that you know on county council and support this policy and express your gratitude for their efforts. And I'll stop there.
Okay, go ahead.
Just one thing, thank Brian for coming. I have followed what county council is doing in this regard, you know, to some extent. And I think it's extremely exciting, particularly the part about trying to get lower AMIs. And it's something that, you know, I've been sort of harping on for a while that, you know, 80% AMI is great, but it really does not help the people like Ms. Patton, who came and spoke to us today, who was being pushed out, you know, of her neighborhood and her home. I know that you're going to be reaching back out to us. I look forward to hearing from you with that regard. And I'd also like you to start thinking about ways that we can amend or augment our policies to create a magnifying effect for what the county is doing and try to spur this along as much as possible. But like I say, you know, exciting, exciting news.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will, I'm sorry. I would just chime in and this council's been incredibly supportive of allocating the amount annually called for by our Greenville 2040 Plan, two and a half million and then some. But we are at that crossroads to where we're making good annual payments, but it's not leverageable with what Brian has in his toolkit to work with. And if there's a way to look at policy to continue our financial contribution at that level as called for by GVL 2040 and give him the means to leverage it to make even more and build that layering, that will allow us to make a much bigger dent much faster.
Well, and I just want to, and I want to thank all of you. I mean, we have, I think, received currently $12.5 million to date from the city of Greenville. I think, I think the city has absolutely led the way in this effort. And with the creation of the Greenville Housing Fund, of course, we are talking to everybody in our community, not just the city of Greenville, but obviously the county, your sister municipalities across the county. And people are beginning to recognize the challenges that we all have in all of these communities in Greenville County because of our population growth, our vibrant economy, our beauty and beautiful weather and, you know, the number of people are coming here. But you all have led the way in this, no question about it. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, I just want to say how grateful I am to have Brian in our community. I mean, I just, you are thoughtful and thorough and you care and you know your stuff. And that is so important for someone like me to have confidence in the guy who is in charge, gal, but in this case, guy who's in charge. And I just really appreciate you and we're very, very lucky to have you. So thank you, Brian.
Absolutely.
Anyone else from council?
Thank you all.
Of course, we appreciate your coming right back after that to give us some new information. And I think that's very, very helpful. And now that $12 million looks a little bit better. It was looking slim there for a while, but it's looking a little bit better because there is difficulty. And it's the one, some of us may not remember, but 2008, we received a report that we had a surplus of affordable housing, 2008. In the city of Greenville and Greenville County, there was a surplus of affordable housing. Look how short time changed. And so we appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, you can clap. That's, we're them clapping. At this time, appointments for boys in commission, I have.
And Mayor Pro Tim, I believe we may have our co-chairs with us. Is it Riley Shaw?
Riley.
Riley. And I think Emmy Kohler is here and they're going to make the recommendations to council tonight for youth commission.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Emmy Kohler and I'm a senior at Greenville High School. I'm one of the co-chairs of the City of Greenville Youth Commission.
My name is Riley Shaw and I'm also a senior at Greenville High School and the other co-chair of the Greenville City Youth Commission.
Before we begin our recommendations, Riley and I would also like to recognize the current members of youth commission who are here with us today.
Please stand. Current members of, that are already, yeah.
And with that being said, the youth commission would like to recommend the following individuals for appointment.
Yoya Acker from Legacy Early College High School.
Stand, okay. Stay, remain standing, go ahead.
Jackson Benton, South Side Christian School.
Aurora Clemens from St. Joseph's Catholic School.
Isabella Meyston from Greenville Technical Charter High School.
Charlotte Paps, also from St. Joseph's Catholic School.
And Jillian Clark from Jailman High School.
Okay, all right. There's been a recommendation for the following young people. I need to understand, what is your, what's your question?
Madam Mayor Pro Tim, I will put a motion that we accept the recommendation of the youth commission leadership by appointing each of the individuals standing in the room tonight.
Second, second.
Okay, it's been moving properly, second. Clerk will call the roll. Well, we'll do resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Thank you so very much and congratulations and we'll. And we will see y'all at the end of the meeting to take pictures, I'm sure, et cetera. But thank y'all so much for coming. Next, our order of business, unfinished business orders.
Left to present.
Second.
Clerk will call a roll for a consistent agenda.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye. Our regular agenda.
15A, an ordinance to appropriate $34,357 in the miscellaneous grants fund for the FY 2022 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program.
So moved.
It's been moving properly, second. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye. Item 16A.
New business resolution to approve the subsurface encroachment permit for West End Restaurants LLC doing business as Brick Tops to install and maintain footers located on its property at 1 North Main Street, Suite H, which will encroach into the public right of way on North Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I have some questions.
I have one comment.
No, you go ahead.
You go first, I have one comment.
So are you going to give the presentation or no? I have questions about it and I'm sorry. When they do this, Clint, and it'd be easier if I had the pictures, but you know what I'm going to ask you about. I know you know this. Do they have a plan to keep the sidewalks open during construction?
What they're proposing is a.
Or dining space. This construction won't have a big impact on the sidewalk use. They should be able to keep it open during the installation of this.
They will be able to keep it open during the installation, and here should. And then on both, do they have a plan to meet? It was hard to tell from the picture, but it almost looked like they were going to be disturbing those parking spaces. So I guess in the upper left picture, I just am asking to be assured that we won't be blocking those off for a lay down area or whatever, that all of that will remain operational during this completion.
We can work with them to keep those spaces open.
Good.
Okay, well, my question, now that I see the last photograph, because I've had complaints about other sidewalk eating where the people who were walking up the street were always, couldn't get through. And oftentimes, people with dogs coming by would, I guess, would aggravate people who were sitting in tables. And so I think the way this is, that last photograph at the bottom is what it's going to look like.
Yes, ma'am. That's the rendering that was presented to the design review board. This little outdoor dining area is actually on their property.
Right.
But the planner wall you see there is right on the property line. And then you can see the canopy overhang does extend out into the right of way. But this should, is still going to leave plenty of adequate sidewalk space there for pedestrians and provide a nice separation for their patrons.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, clerk, call a roll.
Resolution.
Oh, resolution, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next slide.
Item 16B, a resolution to certify the property located at 101 Mayberry Street as an abandoned textile mill site under the South Carolina Textile Communities Revitalization Act.
So moved.
Second.
Councils, good evening. Wanted to present this to you guys this evening. This is 101 Mayberry Street. This is an abandoned textile mill. We've certified that through our research. Next slide, please. You can see the location there, sort of in your top left corner and then Unity Park in the vicinity there. Next slide. That's an aerial. Obviously, it doesn't look like that anymore. And this is the site of the Delano at Unity Park, which will be a mixed use. And staff recommendation is approval. There's no fiscal impact because it's seeking state income tax credits. Any questions?
Your questions.
Sound familiar, John?
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Down here.
Okay, all right, all those, this is resolution. First and final reading, all those in favor of this item, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Right. Now, staff report.
Yes, ma'am. Do have a few updates we'd like to share and then we've got a couple of presentations as well to follow that. First, let me start with Stone Avenue. That safety project is progressing into the planning and design phase. The area of study includes Stone Avenue from I-385 to Rutherford Street. And the scope will include a roadway safety audit similar to what we did on Augusta Street, traffic analyses, access management, intersection improvements, and pedestrian signal evaluation. We expect to select an engineering firm in November and anticipate a six to eight month study time to follow. And during this time, we'll also host a number of public meetings for neighborhoods and businesses in the area so they can provide their input and view preliminary design details. I know, Councilman, if you've got anything you'd like to say related to that.
I just, I'm excited about this. It's progress is progress. And on behalf of the children from Viola and Heritage Nice Park, they have to go to school and cross Stone Avenue. Thank you. On behalf of the families that cross Stone Avenue, go downtown and McPherson Park, thank you. Big, big deal. So really excited about that.
Also have an update on 817 Cleveland Development. That's on the Planning Commission agenda for next week. And staff reports for all Planning Commission items will be published this Friday, October 14th. Separate but related, SCDOT with the support of our city engineering team has initiated a road diet study for the portion of Cleveland Street abutting 817 Cleveland with the intention of slowing traffic and providing enhanced pedestrian safety. A public meeting is planned for October 27th at 5:30 PM at the Greenville Convention Center. At this meeting, SCDOT will receive input on the proposed road diets on Cleveland Street, Alfred Street, and Grove Road. And I also want to thank Matt and his team. We received our second Government Finance Officers Association Triple Crown for financial documents and reporting, an accomplishment matched by only three other cities in the state of South Carolina. The city was awarded recognition for excellence in the annual budget, the annual comprehensive financial report, and the popular annual financial report. Special thanks to Matt, Beth Brotherton, Karen Crawford, Sarah Cook, Christina Junker, M.J. Simpson, and Lauren Tedetti for your hard work on helping the city achieve those awards. So thank you all for that.
Thank you.
We want to give you an update on commercial corridor facade improvement program. I know that's a priority area for council. Council has budgeted a number of dollars through the years for that. And we've got some good news to share with some nice renderings. Merle, you want to come up and share the presentation with council?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. McDonough, Mayor Pro Tim, council. Good evening. Appreciate you guys giving me a few minutes today. We're going to go through this fairly quickly. Perfect, thank you. Because I just want to give you guys an update. I was here several months ago giving you guys an update. And so just to level set everybody again, funded by the city of Greenville, this program, we provide financial and technical assistance, support the revitalization of the city's commercial corridors. We help the owners enhance the appearance of their buildings. And the program is not retroactive. We always do this forward looking. Committee members, we've changed it now. It is now myself and Stephanie, Stephanie Dablemont. She administers the program. And then we brought it all in-house, planning and development. We got Mary Douglas Hurst, Ross Solinsky, Barrett Armstrong. And then as the planning staff members get assigned to a specific corridor and any member reviewing the permit, they will now be on the team as well. Again, just the maximum allowable award is $10,000 per property for eligible improvements. I'm not going to go through all the math there. And then for our featured corridor, which just happens to be Wade Hampton, it's $25,000 per property for eligible improvements. Currently, public investment that we, that you all have approved to date is just over $1 million. Private investment for eligible expenses is just over $16 million. But the economic investment, so all the investments that were made to date was $55 million. So we've leveraged $1 million to get almost $56 million worth of new investment into the city. Total funds allocated to date was 1.4. Total expenditures is about $842,000. Encumbered is about $138,000 with an available balance of $461,000. Here's the number of projects, 131 to date. There's the corridors and where they're, where they're at currently. And then eligible areas, we wanted to highlight two, Haywood Road and Woodruff Road have been added to this list. And as you can see from a map that the planning department helped us create, we feel like we're hitting a lot of different areas of the city now with this. Now let me get into the pictures. So projects under construction, 832 Wade Hampton, formerly McBride's Office Supply. You can see the picture on the left is what it currently looks like. We have renderings, obviously, because they're not done. What's interesting about this one is the DRB designated as a historic designation mid-century modern. So we're really excited about that. This is going to be for office tenants. And currently, there's 24 offices in there and four of them have been leased already. We've asked, but they won't tell us who the four are yet. They're confidential, but come back with more information as we know that. This is 324 Wade Hampton Boulevard, formerly Mean Street Motorsports. Again, it's currently under construction. This one is going to be, the name of the company is DiscommonGoods.com. It's an industrial brand, design, brand identity, and design engineering manufacturing. This one's a really cool company. We're actually going to send Mike Panasco out there to visit with them because they're doing some interesting and unique things to help with manufacturing for companies that need help in manufacturing. 1800 Lawrence Road, formerly the Sunshine Cleaners. This is going to be the Greenville Weightlifting, which helps clients qualify for U-25 Nationals, American Open Finals, Youth Nationals, and Master Nationals.
And DeWorke is their first customer, right?
Yes. 1010 Lawrence Road. This is Base Camp. I think you guys have all heard of that. This is the one that's going to have all the medical offices on it. We did some unique things with this one. There's actually two buildings on here. You can't see the other picture because we couldn't fit it all on one slide. But there's two buildings that there's facades going to get improved on this one. 19 Blair Street. This one is really cool because we all helped a site selection consultant go into this office. It's called Strategic Development Group. And we know them very well with JADC and the Upstate Alliance. They've actually brought a couple of projects to the state of South Carolina over the last couple of years.
Merle, how did that one get, since it's on Blair, not on the corridor?
It's right on Lawrence.
I know, I know where it is. I'm just, is it because it's pretty close or is there?
That, and then it, we have built some more flexibility into the, into the procedures in order to be able to get buildings like that taken care of that we know we're going to have some potentially strategic partners that are going into it. that we know we're gonna have some potentially strategic partners that are going into it. So yeah, the, the procedures have been, um, some more flexibility in them, as well as the proximity to Lawrence Road.
Okay.
Um, 1 East, um, Stone Avenue, this is the former Rite Aid. Um, I think you guys all know this is gonna be turned into a Prisma, uh, health, uh, medical office, uh, when they're, when they're done. Uh, 325?
Excuse me. Could you tell me what's happening to the, uh, the kids', um, uh, art that's on the wall?
I was just gonna say.
Is it still gonna be there?
Yes, ma'am. I want to thank Henry Horowitz. I want to thank Mary Douglas. Where's Mary? Is she in? Mary Douglas, thank you. Big deal to keep that mural. Uh, yep, thank you for asking.
I was concerned, 'cause those little children invested a whole lot.
Yes, ma'am. We're all over that.
Thank you.
Thanks, councilman. Good work. Um, 325 Augusta Street, um, this one is gonna be the Means Investment Company is going into it. I think, um, this is right across from Floor Field. Um, 115 Wellborn Street, um, this is where Pangia Brewing, Isomer Project Group Engineering Firm. And again, this gets back into some of the flexibility that we have built into it, um, so that we have an opportunity to, 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 as I would say, very high visibility areas now that Unity Park is open. Uh, we wanted to make sure that the facade looked really good, um, in that area. And then the last one I have is 1290 Pendleton Street. This is gonna be the Joseph Bradley Art Studio. Um, and there's a really good picture. We couldn't put it in here, in here in time. That Stephanie went and took of it today. Um, if you would drive over there right now, you can see that the building is, is going up. And so those are all the updates I've got for you. We will be coming to you all next, uh, council meeting with, um, the, uh, the changes, um, into that so we can move forward with that. Oh, and there is one other piece. Um, I'm currently working on a memo that the city manager asked me to do for the downtown facade program, and so you guys will be seeing that sometime this week when I get it to him, um, for an update on the, the five projects that will be, uh, that we're using the downtown facade money for.
Uh, you know, I love this program, and I love the outcome from it, and I think it's a great use of dollars, and every little bit helps these small businesses. If there's one thing I would say there's room for improvement on, it's, multiple times, and some of them are business owners that are in these slides, had no idea the program existed. And so they happened to hear about it because they happened to be in a conversation with one of us or a staff member, and I don't know how to push it out to business owners. I'm sure you have a plan for that, but I'm saying whatever you, whatever, whatever plan you have, let er rip. And then you said in the beginning, um, not in arrears, only forward-facing. So let's say a business owner, you know, has started. So what's the timeline for them applying? Obviously, we can't reimburse someone who did something in, in the past or certain period, but do we have a structure around that?
We, right now, it is before any work has started, you have to be approved by the committee members.
How long does that process take?
For it to be approved?
Application to?
It depends on the project council member Gibson, and, and why, why I say that is, is the design of this program is because we want to give the planning staff an opportunity to weigh in so that we get the best looking product. And so it could be as quickly as they give us the information as we need, but it can also delay it a little bit, only because, again, we want to get the best product that we can get. So I can't really tell you there's no definitive time from that regard.
And when they do, when they do a, a, any kind of frontage improvement, they're gonna have to go to planning staff at some level, right? Like downtown, I know there's a process through DRB, but if they're, you know, and not in the downtown area, they're interacting with staff, planning staff, correct, at some point?
Yeah, yes, so long as whatever work they're doing requires permit.
And at that point, anyone on planning staff would know to inform them of their options for FIP money.
That's right. And we've been working with Merle and Stephanie to ensure that we're flagging those and letting Stephanie Dabellmont, who is our program administrator, know to reach out to them and let them know about what's available to them through the facade improvement program.
Great.
To include, um, the IT departments help us put some things in a navaline so that it gets flagged when, when they're, when they're looking at those permits, just me.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Excellent program.
In addition to the great work that the housing funds doing, our own community development team has got some updates. They've got a lot of tools in their toolbox, and we'd like to share a quick update of some of the successful pieces coming out of community development. Back up.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council and city manager. Um, as Mr. City Manager mentioned, we do have a couple of tools in our toolbox within the city's community development department. We work exclusively with our planning department, as well as our engineering and our economic development department on a lot of these. Um, so quickly, you'll remember a few of these as you pass these ordinances. The first we have is the hotel conversion to multifamily. Um, as you know, this allows conversion of, uh, hotels if they provide at least 20% of units as affordable for 25 years, or 30% at 20 years. So we did have one project that has been successful, which elected for a 30% affordable unit ratio at 20-year affordability period. We do have a second project on the books over on Lawrence Road that has elected for 20% affordable unit ratio in a 25-year affordability period. That one has submitted for permits, and we are just waiting on a final development name to execute the documents on that. So that should be coming down the pipeline soon as well. We also have the Unity Park Character Code, um, which allows for 25% at 30 years. So with that, we also receive a development plan from the developer, as well as agreements and covenants and restrictions. Um, as mentioned previously, we have the, um, Delano. That one, we are in legal review for the agreement as well, and I believe they've submitted for permits as well on those. So that one will also be coming up. That one will have 25 affordable units at 80% AMI. If you recall, we also have the clause in the Bailey Bill that allows low and moderate income rental property, um, to have a special tax assessment at 20 years for rehab work as well. So we had Greenville Summit and Stradivarius Place that utilized that tool within the city. We also have home buyer assistance that we provide, uh, through Community Works, as well as through other organizations and in-house. Uh, we had Summer Hall where we had nine affordable units, um, at these price points with down payment assistance available for those. Eight of them are either under contract and being constructed or have completely closed, so we do have one unit remaining on that development. Upcoming, um, we did have home assistance funds of $75,000 that we will use for $15,000 of assistance to be made, um, available for five residents at 80% AMI below. These do come with HUD restrictions, so HUD does have a purchase price limit on homes for those. So the limit for Greenville County by HUD standards is $251,000 for new construction and $223 for existing. Another tool we've used in the past is our rental rehab program through various federal funds. We've, um, typically provided this as grant, but we are looking at, um, providing this through low interest loans for repayment in hopes that this will be cyclical, and we can continue to invest in that program as well. So we are looking into efforts such as that. As you all know, we have land banked for quite a few years in our special emphasis neighborhoods on infill parcels. Um, we're currently looking at five parcels within special emphasis neighborhoods, and also looking at a streamlined policy and process for developers to request our property for development. The large piece that we have right now that we're looking at, um, is an interim policy for alternatives to onsite development of affordable dwelling units. This is something that many municipalities throughout, um, the country, most notably in Charleston, North Carolina, do this as well, um, where you have alternatives to providing a unit such as fee in lieu of units or land dedication. So with this policy, by approval of Planning Commission and/or City Council, as well as, um, executing a development agreement, a developer can request that instead of providing onsite units for the development, um, they could provide a fee in lieu of that. So that would be calculated based on the subsidy required for that unit for them to construct. Uh, they can also, um, dedicate land to the city for future affordable housing development as well. So I do kind of have an example to walk through with that. Um, so for the fee in lieu of units, if a development is proposed to include 30 residential units, and we would require them at 10%, um, if they so see that it's unfeasible for them to provide those three units, we would require that $10,000 subsidy to provide it, so they would provide the city with $30,000 for affordable housing initiatives. On the transverse of that, if they were to look at land dedication, they would propose a parcel that they own elsewhere. It would be reviewed, um, to provide the same amount of zoning that would give us those three units, um, and have the same kind of land value for that as well. Any questions on that? So that leads us to a development that has actually proposed to use this. Um, they approached our planning department, community development, and our engineering department. Um, this is the Austin Park development that was approved by Planning Commission in April. Um, so they are looking at an 86-unit subdivision, and they, um, were looking at eight units for affordable housing. So they proposed that they provide us with the, um, land sale cost of that. Um, so their base price for the, um, home for sale is $290,000, and the affordable unit cost, um, that they proposed was $222,000. That would require a very large subsidy per unit, um, and that would also put us at 120% AMI, which is above what we're kind of shooting for, for these, for these units. Um, so we are proposing that we still take in that fund, that fee in lieu, and use that for land banking efforts for affordable housing as well. Any questions? Well, Shannon has anything to add on that project?
Excellent.
This was an opportunity for us to work with the developer and with community development and engineering to try to look at alternative ways within our toolbox to address some options for affordable homeownership. I think that, um, we hear that a lot about that, trying to provide, um, an ownership option within the community. Um, and this was an exciting opportunity to try this through a pilot. And so, um, we wanted to show you some of the tools in our toolbox, and then let you know that we'll be coming forward with this draft policy and the MOU at your next meeting, um, as another alternative in the toolbox. And I think that Brian has talked about that a lot lately, about there's all different options, and it's finding the right option for the right project, um, to help address our affordable housing needs. And so this was, um, something that I really want to thank our community development team for assisting, and our engineering team for assisting the planning department as we worked through trying to come up with some creative options with a willing developer that was willing to come to the table and say, okay, here, here's what I need, and this is what I can do, but, you know, this is how we have to work together on this. And so, um, just trying to use a little creativity and ingenuity to find options for our community.
And all of this is until we get to the Greenville Development Code adoption? It's that's the interim part of it, or?
I think we want to just see how the policy works. I think that, um, the Greenville Development Code will be incentivizing affordable housing, but as Charles Spooky says, it's not the only tool in the toolbox. So it can't just be the, through the zoning. There has to be other options that you can do to incentivize. So I think this policy is more to see, it's the pilot would be with the Austin development and the Austin Park development, and then beyond that, then if it was something that council thought was successful, then it could become a permanent policy, similar to how we worked with the hotel motel conversion for the terrain.
And then when we do the, one, real quick, one last thing, when we do a land swap, when they give land in lieu of, do we do any kind of overarching environmental assessment of that land that we are getting?
I believe, so when we do HUD, we do an environmental review for HUD standards. Um, I'm not sure what else we would maybe require as far as just the city, since it's not being purchased with HUD funding.
It's just a due diligence issue, that, that you might get acreage that looks great. You can put a house on, and then from a what's beneath the surface, it's not such a great parcel.
And I'll write that down and add that to the policy.
I just want to make sure I understand this. Um, so current LMO, what subdivision was proposed is Austin Park Development. Current LMO would allow for 74 units. They're going to instead build 86 units, but they're going to give us $544,000.
It wasn't a density bonus. What it was, was related to, we were able to utilize some other options for their onsite engineering, and we allowed for a sidewalk on one side of the street instead of both sides of the street. It had nothing to do with the density.
Okay. All right. So, so we're, we're giving them, we're, we're giving them some options as far as the sidewalk and, and allowing them to create more space, and in exchange for that, they're giving us $544,000, which will then go into a fund for affordable housing land banking. Okay.
If council were to approve that policy, it has to come before you for approval.
Is that in addition to our annual allocated CIP for affordable, or offsetting?
No, this is additional funding.
I'm looking at Brian, too, in the back. He's nodding, yes, it's additional. Of course he is. I would, but it would be in addition to the annual CIP allocation. Okay.
Shannon.
Yeah, but I don't think we give this to, my understanding is, we don't give this to houses.
This would remain in the city.
Okay.
With us or staff.
This would stay in community development, and we would be using that to buy parcels, particularly in special emphasis neighborhoods that become available, and then we would
Correct.
Hold on to those properties for the purpose of, of allowing for affordable housing down the road.
Correct. And if you recall, our CDBG allocation roughly for property acquisition is about $100,000, which, as you know, does not get us very competitive in the market for infill properties that we're looking at, that is working towards neighborhood preservation.
Okay. Now, now, are we going to, are we going to augment that policy with some efforts to create some relationships with people in the community so that we can identify some of these properties as they're going to come up? Because, because one of the things that we're seeing in my special emphasis neighborhoods is that as older people are passing on, they're, you know, their kids are getting properties, and if we can get in and get those properties, then...
Yes, this will be with a concerted effort to actually specifically go in and do more of that education and empowerment. We used to do empowerment team a, a long time of, um, heirs and wills properties and things like that. So we would continue to do that in addition to all that you've said. Sorry.
Any other questions or comments?
I do have one, please. Um, so I'm, I'm just curious, from a nuance standpoint, is the staff's intent to bring this forward with a duration of time associated with it?
Um, we hadn't considered that. It was more just based on one project to see how it worked, but we can, we can absolutely add a duration of time. We've done that on other, in other ordinances or other policies where we have, um, where we kind of want to look and see how it's functioning and whether it's serving the community and the will of the council.
Got another question based on his question. Um, would we know enough from this particular project to make a decision whether or not it should be implemented in our LMO? As we are?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Anybody else? Excellent.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Rebecca. Any city manager anymore? Any other council members besides our happy birthday party, and we've already had, we've already had a flat cake and, um, and we moving forward. Any other, um, we do appreciate the people that came to the, um, redistricting and the very last redistricting meeting will be on the 17th. Right.
District one, Bobby Pierce.
In the birthday boys area. Et cetera, and if you have not made one, we'd love for you to come by, et cetera. Uh, any other, as they say in church, our hearts and minds are clear. Okay? Thank y'all so much. Okay.